The county commissioners court regular meetings. Uh, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three, it's about nine oh three again. It's a call this meeting to order. We have a form established, Commissioner Carbaskey, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire is here. Commissioner Wilson's with us by way of zoom. Thank you, Leon. Good to see you. And your own side muted right now, too. There you go. All right. Can you hear us? Okay?
Yeah.
All right, got you. Okay. Um, so we have a form established. We have business for the court today. If y'all would all rise. We'll have the pledges this morning and then the sheriff's going to leave send the application. American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the great soul of liberty and justice for all.
And the most beautiful. Our green nations.
Honor of the Constitution. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and in this.
Sheriff.
Your honor, Father Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings you give us, Lord. Lord, thank you for everyone that's in attendance and those viewing online, Lord. I just ask a blessing on everyone, Lord. I pray a blessing that we have peace. We have understanding, Lord, and we keep our eyes focused on you to do the things that you would have us do, Lord. In all cases, Lord, I ask to be with the judge and commissioners so they make the rules and the things to run the county here in an efficient way, Lord, and I just ask a blessing on each of them. And Lord, be with us when we err, forgive us of our sins and be with us today. Keep us safe. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. By the way, again, happy birthday tomorrow.
Yes.
Is it? Is it number thirty-six or is it thirty-nine?
Thirty-six plus twenty-four.
It's not bad at all, is it? Yeah, I mean, it's the alternative, right? Very good. Alrighty. Uh, public comment. I don't have anyone that signed up this morning, so let's go ahead and drive home. Um, declare conflicts of interest. We have anyone that has any conflicts today on this. Number ten, okay, David. Yeah. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Y'all all have the opportunity to look over this. If there are any questions or concerns, discussion.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I think we got a gentleman. Just wanted to. I'm not. With our.
Good morning. Come on up here a little closer. So. You want to make a public comment today?
Oh, I don't know if I'm making a comment or if I can just have a minute of y'all's time. And I apologize for my ignorance on the proper.
Okay, well, what's your name first of all?
Scott.
Scott. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I came here asking, we've been trying for over a year to put in a bridge at Zelenki. And we want to add coffee sluted at on County Road six oh two.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, it was tabled a year ago. But there's an urgency on this because it's a danger to the buses going across there, let alone all the other trucks. And as you're aware of, there's a big development just to the west of there. Uh, just don't, if anybody has any questions as to our drawings, et cetera, feel free to reach out to us. But we really, from a safety standpoint, we need to get the project approved. We're not asking for money. We're not asking for anything but to go ahead and put these issues in.
And I have received your communications and I'll pass those on to uh, uh, Mr. Poston, our county attorney, so he should be in contact with you and we'll go through the proper protocol on that matter.
Yes.
Okay.
May I give you one of my cards in case?
I've got it. Yeah, as a matter of fact, it does.
If anybody wants to reach out to us and I spoke with the uh, with the school district and the bus garage. And they agree with me, it's been urgent to get this done.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That morning, Mike.
Yes, sir. Yeah, come on up. Why not?
I apologize. I didn't intend to promote a long exciting public comments.
That's okay.
My name is Philip Sterling. I live in Choney Club, Texas, a few hours away, but um, I am trying to acquire a parcel of abandoned land that Liberty County did not actually know they owned. There lies within my fence line since nineteen forty-two. Okay, so for the last, I don't, my calculation, I believe eighty years has been maintained by my family and uh, nobody knows that we didn't own it, neither the dad nor the county, and I'm trying to acquire that. I know I'm on your agenda, item number twenty, but I wasn't sure to go to the court session here if I made it to speak. So I figured maybe I just wrote a quick letter to all the commissioners with some exhibits. Maybe I could just uh, give it to you now and maybe if I'm able to participate in agenda item twenty out of eleven percent. If not, at least you have this. I'm not sure if that's uh.
Yeah, Matthew is here with us. He, I'm aware of it and he's aware of it. It uh, yeah, it, that the grease is hot and the fish is about ready to be dropped in. So that's where I look at it on this one. Right? You know, we know what the problem is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me.
You bet.
Philip, is that the same material you sent to me in email form?
Well, I have a propensity to be long-winded, so I actually changed this down into uh, much less technical terms. So basically, a property, it's a very technical term. I'm trying to acquire the hole in the middle of my donut. So.
Yeah. I, I forwarded uh, the deeds and the other information that you had sent me before. That's in the commissioner's packet. So uh, we'll be able to review that too when we, when we come up item twenty.
I just figured I'd come down to Liberty in case anybody had any questions for me.
So you probably need to come and see your dad anyway.
Yeah, I spent the night. I had a great breakfast.
There you go. All right. Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda. Any other questions or concerns or?
Do y'all have any additions to?
I have one. Um, for the bailiff for the two fifty-third. And there is a master piece officer certificate that we need to request the increase in pay on to the eighteen hundred dollars. And per year and it will work out eventually then that too. So.
You get this in the next go around.
And also the November treasury report man is on this agenda and it's already been on the.
We'll make sure we all, it's okay.
I think a motion to approve with the additions and the deletions.
I got a motion from Bruce. Second Greg to approve, said a judgment of the notations regarded. Please, you get that uh, someone on the Masterpiece Officer license. Did you, you're muted.
I'm sorry, sir.
Did you, you got that addition on that uh, two fifty-third bailiff, right?
A bailiff increase in pay, I heard eighteen hundred.
Yes.
And we are removing the treasury report for November?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. All right, got a motion from Bruce, save from Greg, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Not alone. Regular agenda, Mr. Gott over the prosecutor's office. Senator approved the engagement letter with Bayes and Associates, P L L C. Physical year nine thirty twenty-two, annual financial report and single audit reports.
Move approve. Thank you.
Got a motion from Greg, second for Bruce to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, ayes. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two, uh, regular agenda. Mr. Gott, uh, considering approval pay request, Grant Works pertaining to the uh, C D B G grant. This is another part of the housing buyouts and I'm just gonna give file number, lib code one thirty-five slash Fort Liberty County. See purchase price is seventy thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars sixty, plus estimated closing cost of five thousand. The total is not to exceed seventy-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars sixty cents. And homeowner relocation incentive, five thousand we paid closing. We've had several of these already, gentlemen. Yeah, you got a motion from Leon.
Second.
Second from Bruce to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, uh, considering approved lease agreement by between Liberty County and the border regions. Uh, the University of Texas. System for the use and benefit of the University of Texas Medical Branch at Galveston. For a leased space in five oh one Palmer Street in Liberty. Uh, this is just our usual standard agreement and let them continue to use that space. Motion from David, second from Greg, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, connections from Ms. Bergman, District Attorney, considering approved the request by the District Attorney's Office to apply for a continuation of the grant for Victim Assistance Coordinator through the Office of Governor, Criminal Justice Division for twenty twenty-three, twenty-fourth, grant number two eight seven six six zero seven. Liberty County agrees to provide applicable matching funds for said project required by the Victim Assistance Coordinator grant application. And this is for the new budget in October, correct, Dwayne?
I think so.
Okay. So. Motion from Bruce, second Greg, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five from Ms. Bergman, considering approved Liberty County District Attorney's Office to apply for a grant for the testing forensic evidence grant program through the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Liberty County Commissioners Court agrees to provide applicable matching funds for the said project as required by the Office of Governor. Grant application, uh, none are required. So it's basically, we're gonna be asking for funds coming to the new budget.
Motion to approve.
Say. Motion from Bruce, second Greg, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six from Ms. Bergman, considering approved Liberty County District Attorney's Office to apply for the Violence Against Women Act Grant through the Office of Governor, Criminal Justice Division for twenty-three, twenty-four. For the purpose to train prosecutors, investigators, and victim assistance coordinators to more effectively identify, investigate, and respond to violent crimes against women. The county agrees to provide matching funds for said project as required by the Violence Against Women Act Grant application. And again, this will be for the new budget in October.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second Leon to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, ayes.
I like one of these friends saying it's a taxpayer.
I'll agree. We ain't got a problem with them. We use them pretty regularly. Number seven from Ms. Chambers. Consider and approve the Tyler Technologies contract to customize the web service portion of Eagle Recorder to allow for no submissions, including payments in the amount of only two hundred and fifty dollars payable through the Liberty County Clerk's Records Management Fund. And this does, to my understanding, match the use uh, that we can uh, use these funds for. Lee, anything you want to enlighten us on about it?
No, it very much so. Um, it's going to take the last bit of my office that's all paper and give us a way to digitize it, allow people like Tri-County or the Historical Commission or even the Commissioners Court to upload their um, their notices to us. And then we will electronically stamp them and put them into an electronic kiosk. It's gonna be great. So I'm very excited about this. But this is some adjustments they have to make to our web portion so that people can file into it and we can waive or take the payment, et cetera. And then uh, it will then move on to the uh, the posting, which will, won't be in that hallway anymore. It'll be on an electronic format.
Okay.
Like a motion to approve.
Motion from David, say from Greg to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight from Ms. Chambers, we had this on the table from the previous meeting, consider approved the contract for Text My Gov software and services for county notices published by the Liberty County Clerk. The amount of twelve thousand five hundred per year plus five thousand two hundred fifty bucks is set up and the training fee totaling seventeen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for twenty twenty-three to be paid from the Liberty County Clerk's Records Management Fund. And Lee, we talked about this quite a. Can we put this, uh, this is my suggestion. I don't think we can use the Records Management Fund for this, but can we put this in the new budget in October and we'll find the money from the general fund?
Um, I, I mean, if that's the way you want to go, that's fine. I think the majority of the use of it will come out of my office. Um, mainly, we're gonna use it to send out an instant notice when we file a posting or we put a posting up on the internet. Uh, so I mean, we will be, it will be integrated into and part of our uh, our, you know, our notice system and our, our notice. Well, we're letting, notifying people that the notices are up. So uh, I think there's a lot of interest in this. What other people want to use it for is fine by me. If you want to split it between my office and other offices, that's great, but my office does need it.
Yeah, okay.
We have the funds to pay for it too, so.
Yeah, I know you do. You got a pretty good sack of cash sitting there, but I prefer to do it the best way we can and use the general fund in the new budget. And that way, it's, it's a little bit cleaner for everybody to be able to operate. So let's take no action on this one, but if you would bring it back up in September, uh, prior to the new, well, you know, September.
August.
August, yeah, yeah. Prior to the new budget.
Motion to take no action.
Yeah, the motion from Bruce, second Greg, take no action. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, the permits inspections from Mr. Douglas. Come on up and see us, Dave.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
I have three items today.
All right, we're gonna consider and approve preliminary plat for the Incentive Estates subdivision, section six. L J A Engineering has reviewed and approved the preliminary plat. Okay?
This is an additional hundred and twenty-eight lots. Uh, the subdivision is located on Tenaway. Uh, near, just out past Tenafit, Tenafit Central. Nice subdivision. Pat Baker's here with us this morning. Uh, this is pretty straightforward. L J A has gone through it. They've approved preliminary. They're working on the final. I anticipate bringing it back to you in the final. And to, we asked you to approve a preliminary plat for Incentive Estates.
Got a motion from Leon, second, I think, from David.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye. Likewise, ayes. Thank you, gentlemen. Number ten, uh, see David, you got at least two more. Let's see, uh, number ten is consider approve the final plat for Settle Place subdivision, section fifteen. L J A Engineering has reviewed and approved the final plat. Subdivision has thousand eighty-two lots.
We just keep growing.
Yep.
It uh, it's a big subdivision. Trey Harris is here with us this morning. Uh, L J A has reviewed this thoroughly. This one's been in the, in the opera now for probably six to eight weeks.
Yep.
And uh, it's big. Uh, it's not as big as. Fourteen, thank you, San Flay section to go as high as two thousand lots.
Yeah.
But uh, this one is good. It's approved. We're gonna ask you to go ahead and approve the final plat this morning. I've got my lawyers here with me. When you break from this meeting, we'll execute and see if I can get it filed.
Make a motion to approve.
David. Motion from Bruce. Second from uh, Greg. I didn't hear you, Leon. Did you say anything?
No, I was coughing.
Oh, okay. All right. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
David Epstein?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, David did abstain.
Okay.
Uh, number eleven, uh, considering approve the final plat for Tarkin and Timbers subdivision. L J A Engineering has reviewed and approved this plat subdivision has thirty-eight lots.
Again, it's six minutes stuck in Commissioner Arthur's area. Uh, particularly along around Tarkin. We, we planted uh, subdivision in there about a month ago, I believe. And a very nice subdivision underway. Uh, this one is on County Road twenty-two sixty-eight. It's small, thirty-eight lots. It has been reviewed by L J A. They have approved it. And so we're gonna ask you today to approve the final plat for Tarkin to Timbers.
I'm moving to approve. Second.
Motion. Motion from Greg, second from David to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, ayes. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Judge, my, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We're gonna deliver these my orders out to your office today for your signature. If you would have David Calpke call my office once you've signed off, we'll come.
Okay.
Uh, Your Honor. I just wanted to let David know that I, I will be back in the office on Friday, so he's got a little time. I won't be able to execute the uh, the maps into our system until Friday, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Uh, number twelve is from uh, Linebarger, our tax attorney, considering approve the bids on delinquent tax properties as follows. R Hernandez property ID numbers two nine four three four for seven thousand thirty-one dollars. Uh, Jay Mosley, the uh, pit number is thirty-three, two forty-three for thirty-one hundred dollars. And number three is P Underwood, the pin number is fifty-three, four fifty-nine for seven thousand dollars.
As always, and I hope the court doesn't mind, I've looked over these properties and uh, number two is a little bit shy, but uh, I'm. I'm making a motion to approve all three. No, sir.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number thirteen, uh, from Sheriff Raider, and I guess Billy, if he's here, Billy, you here?
Yes.
How could I miss? Except you're blending in with your chair. Okay. Consider approve memorandum of understanding between Liberty County Sheriff's Office and Kerr County Sheriff's Office. That's a seventy-two hour work agreement with Kerr County Sheriff's Office. You want to explain it to us a little bit?
Yes, sir, I.
Okay.
Kerr County sheriffs uh, having a problem with drugs, as a lot of other counties is, and that, that that our interdiction team, highway interdiction team, which would be two units, uh, would go down and help them to seventy-two hour event of whether it'll stop everybody continuous. But there were several other interdiction teams. I sent Matthew has a copy of the M O U. And I didn't hear that he didn't like it, but we might ask Matthew if it was okay.
I didn't see any issues.
Okay.
Where does Kerr County have?
Kerrville.
Kerrville.
Yeah.
Thank you, much to approve.
Thank you, sir.
That's taken.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Number fourteen is Mr. C. Oh, you don't know how hard it was to send the University of Texas.
Hard to hear.
Discuss and approve issuing a request for proposals for engineering services for asphalt overlay projects using ARPA funds. And we've been on this project, using these ARPA funds for a little bit, but I guess we're about to tidy them up.
Working on it. Got a lot, a lot going on.
Yeah.
You know, the three, the three of the precincts were giving five hundred thousand for road materials.
Yeah.
Precinct three wants to use theirs to contract out asphalt overlay. Talking to Grant Works, uh, they think. You want to do that too? Okay. They think we need an engineer. But I, I talked to David since he's more familiar with all that than anything, but um, I want to talk to him again. He says, since we're just rehabbing roads.
We're not reclaiming.
Yeah. I'll double check on that, but we may have to have an engineer, which is gonna cut into your five hundred thousand dollars to pay them there.
I just don't see where we'd be one of them.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to go with what they say because we get on it to that. I mean. Since it is federal funds. So y'all, y'all go ahead and approve that and then I'll clarify with Grant Works. If we don't need to, we want. If we do, then we start.
So you want to. You want to approve this contingent with approval from, yeah, it works correctly.
Right.
You don't want to modify your motion.
Yeah. Making, making a motion to approve. Grant Works approval.
I don't want to get involved with that there.
Greg, you make a check.
How long it takes them to get back.
Okay, you got a motion, a second, uh, motion Bruce, second Greg, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen, Mr. C. Discuss and approve using P two emulsions as a source for asphalt emulsion products using Tarrant County I L A. Agreement approved by Commissioners Court on May tenth of twenty twenty-two. Okay.
Okay, uh, when we go out for bids for road materials, sometimes, not every year, but sometimes it's you can say, it's a really P square, but they, uh, they call it P two also, but they will send in something and uh, a bid, but it doesn't quite fit what we're asking for. It's asphalt emulsions, but they say they have a proprietary land. So they say it's a sole source. Well, we usually don't do sole source because that's, you gotta do a lot of proving that it is really truly a sole source. So uh, talking with them, uh, Tarrant County has a purchasing co-op. Basically, what they do is they bid, they word it so it allows other counties or cities to piggyback on it. Y'all joined that back in, I think it said bay.
Yeah.
Uh, court agreed to join that co-op. Uh, P square is on there and I just handed out what their prices are on there. So if you would approve it, this gives y'all the option. If you want to try their products. They got, you see, they got several of them listed. Uh, so that'll give you all the opportunity to do it legally.
We like the legal part.
Yeah.
We'll email that price list over to the office for us.
I'll get to you.
Thank you.
And they say they're all, you know, they're, they deal with a lot of county. I think they're doing work down in Chambers County, so they, they know tech stock standards. They.
Yeah, that's the bill road are, and uh, we're reworking that road out there. Commissioner Hammond from Chambers County and they're using P two out there.
Yeah.
I've used P two before. I'm not quite sold on it, but yeah, if the rest of the mission want to use it.
Yeah, they just get a lot of. Yeah, right. Yeah.
Making a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second Greg to approve, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Harold, you got, you getting sitting down for a while here, okay? Uh, number sixteen, discuss and approve purchase of a twenty fifteen Ford F three fifty crew cab duly truck for thirty-five thousand. Really? It equals twenty thousand six hundred eighty-six dollar twenty-eight cents to Community Resource Credit Union and fourteen thousand three hundred thirteen dollars seventy-two cents to Scott Stiles, the road and bridge number four.
Yeah, I looked at this morning, uh, uh, Kelly Blue Book and uh, whatever the, came around the used car place over in outside of Houston, just to get some ideas for two thousand fifteen to F three fifty X L T crew cab. And they ranged, you know, without knowing the specifics of what they have and what this truck has. Uh, they range from like thirties to the mid forties for one similar.
Yeah.
Making a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second David to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, ayes. I didn't have an objection. I just didn't know what they were selling for nowadays.
Yeah, that's, that's just to make sure.
Yeah.
Let me uh, let me get into that a little bit. The ask price for that truck at that time was forty-two thousand. And I uh, I dickered with the old boy for about a week or so and finally got him down to thirty-five. Excellent truck. Truck's in excellent condition and I think it's a, gonna be an asphalt force, asphalt complete. It's really gonna help us because we can't get any trucks. Harold's been shopping. Harold has been shopping and shopping and uh, it's just not there.
Yep. Good deal. Alrighty. Number seventeen, Harold C. Discuss approve the selection of liability insurances. At renewal date of February fifth, twenty twenty-three, including general liability, all bill liability and fiscal damage property, contractor equipment, public entity management liability, wanted taxes, law enforcement liability, that's the ones, employment benefit plan administration liability and cyber crime liability and umbrella coverage.
Okay, I didn't see them sitting in the corner of my leather here. Ben Odom's and uh, Todd Arnold over here.
Okay, y'all come on up and let's visit a little bit. We, we did have a meeting earlier, well, last week and go over these and commissioners might want to have the opportunity to ask you the questions. I got time. Alright, man.
Okay, so I know y'all see this once a year, and it's a big spread of people. I promise I will make this uh, very easy to understand. Um, on the far left column, that's what we call the description of the top end. That's whatever you've raided off of, and then if you move down, those are the coverages, so general liability, law enforcement, public officials, et cetera. You move to the next column, it's titled twenty fifteen. Uh, we have twenty fifteen on here, because I just want to point out how much this county has grown and the risks have changed since twenty fifteen. So if you look at the top, the overall budget was just under thirty-nine million. We had ninety-seven police officers, two hundred and seventy-eight employees, two hundred and thirty-eight vehicles. The values of those vehicles that we are carrying, first party auto physical damage coverage for was eight point four four nine million, and we had twenty-eight point three million dollars in property values. Um, and then if we look all the way to the bottom, the green row shows the premium then was eight forty-one eighty-two with ten twenty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents per thousand dollars on the front. If we fast forward to twenty-two, going back up to the top, our budget was sixty-six point seven million, one hundred and seventy-five officers, four hundred and eighty-seven employees, three hundred and twenty-five power units. Our physical damage values for vehicles have jumped up to six point four five million, and our property values are fifty-seven point two million. Here, if we move all the way to the bottom, in that green row, our premium was one point one three five million, which is about seventeen dollars and two cents per thousand dollars of our budget. This blue column is what we call the twenty-twenty-three flat rate premium. So basically, we take this year's exposure data, and we apply the current rates to them to determine what would our premium be if rates didn't go up, if rates didn't go down. And so what you can see is the budget's up five percent, well, seventeen percent, employee count's up thirteen, vehicles are up ten, our physical damage values jumped thirty-four percent, and our property values have jumped up forty-two percent. So if we just apply the current rates, if we move it all the way down, a flat rate premium is one point three seven seven million dollars. So that's the part that we can't control as your partner. The portion that we can try our best to control is telling a message into the, into the market when we're doing the RPA process and trying to create as much competition as possible within the drivers, so hopefully, and ultimately lower your premiums. So we have four options today. Um, the good news is that the casualty markets of in liabilities, auto, general liability, law enforcement, point of practice, et cetera, is still very competitive. So we have significant rate reductions on the casualty lines. The property market is very different than the casualty market. Um, long story very short, the last three years have been the most, have been the three most active hurricane seasons ever recorded. Um, we had eight years in a row of ten, one billion dollar events. There have been thirteen total ever reported here on eight years in a row. So it's still a tough time to be a property insurance buyer, whether you're a county, school district city, homeowners, whatever it may be. So what we're going to do is walk through these four options. I highlighted any changes. If it's red, I mean, it's not as good last year. If it's green, I mean, it's better this year. So option one, uh, as you can see on the general liability, we have a major rate decrease of fifty-nine percent. We have a seven percent rate reduction in the law enforcement liability. We have, with this carrier, they're now as comfortable going with pay point of practices, that's a twenty percent increase. Auto is down eighteen percent, but they have a difference in deductibles. So last year, the current policy, we have a three thousand dollar deductible for our vehicles. This program would give us a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible for anything under a hundred thousand dollar values, or a five thousand dollar deductible for anything excess of a hundred thousand dollars value. So a little different there. Our crime insurance is down, the umbrella is up because it's following the amount of autos we have. And then the property is up fourteen percent. But our deductible is moving from a one percent based on deductible to a two percent based on deductible. That premium is one point three five one middle, which is two percent rate reduction off of the flat rate. And in that bottom number eleven percent, minus eleven percent, we're still showing that today, this program can be spent eleven percent less cost per budget paid in twenty fifteen. So that's option one. The only difference between option one and option two is at the bottom of the property section. Right now, we have a twenty-five million dollar per occurrence limit for property insurance, meaning every single building is insured, but the most the insurance company is going to give us on one occurrence is twenty-five million dollars.
Have we ever used this insurance?
Property insurance?
Correct, because I don't remember using it during Harvey or any other.
It's had very minor claims, nothing anywhere near that. Very rare.
Automotive, and we used it at all in the last couple of years.
We have.
Yeah.
I see all the records.
Um, so option two lowers that to make it ten million dollar per occurrence. Now, the difference between last year when we did this, today, is our property values are up twenty-five million dollars versus last year. So the, the ratio of the limit that we're carrying the values is, is that premium is one point seven six million, which is a twelve percent rate reduction. So it's a very significant premium reduction to go from twenty-five to ten. The next two options are with a different insurance company. The coverages are the same. The difference is in the auto physical damage. As you can see, there's a considerable rate reduction, but now our deductibles are even lower, so we could have a thousand dollar deductible for any vehicle under a hundred thousand dollars in values, or a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible for anything excess of a hundred thousand dollars. So it's a benefit no matter the value of the item. And then now we have the same two options for property as well. So if we remain at the twenty-five million dollar limit, that premium is one point three one nine, four percent rate reduction. Option two is if we want to take on more revenue. Um, we have a ten million dollar limit. It's one point one eight four, which is a fourteen percent rate reduction.
Consideration would be on the risk side uh, with FEMA help.
Correct.
Okay. Y'all look at those numbers from fifteen to now. Thirty-eight million in fifteen, our overall budget, and our budget sixty-nine, now almost seventy million there. And then you look at, not to be uh, skewing any numbers, but ninety-seven officers, police, you know, law enforcement officers in twenty fifteen, and now we're looking at two hundred and five. That's everything inclusive with the jail itself, right? Harold, so yeah, we've had a big increase in law enforcement personnel, but we've also taken on the jail as well, and this is reflective.
It is. And what y'all recommended is was highlighted in blue.
Blue is what, this blue ninety, quote.
No, it's
This is what a flat rate premium is based on your updated exposures today. So it's either travelers option one, travelers option two, or five, and option northern five.
And we have travelers right now.
Yeah.
You know, years ago, I think we had one beacon, and they went
So you're still with one beacon.
We are.
Try, I mean, travelers change back in
Yeah.
terms that's
Okay.
Um, one beacon that's exited the public areas.
Yeah.
So it would be a new carrier to matter what.
Right.
What is our timeframe on this?
Uh, the renewal is uh, February fifth.
We need to be budgeted this amount or?
Half of the buildings were issued, one did half of the votes were issued.
So what coverage starts money?
I mean, we've covered whatever you're here to tell me.
Yeah. Uh, you know, you're looking at difference, even on Tri-Dept, if you look at it, you know, but a hundred fifty thousand roughly, you know, better than sixty. Difference in the two.
Well, yeah, option one and options two.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, from twenty twenty-two, option one is two hundred and thirty, or two hundred and twenty thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
And we paid uh, twenty twenty-two.
Is, do you want to go with the ten million dollar?
Yeah.
Recurrence limit, or you want to go with twenty-five?
Right. We'll go with two percent, because all of those two percent are raised.
That's correct.
Two percent, that is correct, on the buildings.
We rode that one percent as long as we could. Um, you know, these are a lot of our peers are saying three and five percent. If you're in Harris County, you can't, I mean, you don't, you know, ten percent.
Yeah. Overall, I think the quotes are good. I mean, I already saw homeowners insurance did this year. It's like, good Lord. It's uh, but we knew it was coming. What do y'all like? The one point three? One point one over on the Tri-Dept? Do you like the one point three, one point two in travelers?
I like the option one.
I would say, you know, from being here for a while, that uh, through the years, travelers have been really good.
They've been really good, yeah.
Very good.
And they know
I'm sorry, what?
That was my fault.
Well, y'all like the travelers option two better than travelers option one?
The per occ- uh, occurrence limit has, is at ten thousand instead of twenty-five on the option two.
Ten million.
I mean, I'm sorry, ten million.
What's the I mean, what's your, you know, your exposure? Sheriff, you got in the insurance business, which one do you like as far as an exposure part of the twenty-five million or ten million? I mean, considering that FEMA would probably come riding in and help us, but you know, the upside of it is, Steve.
I, I agree with what Harold was saying just a little bit of Earl there.
Yeah.
No, you like option one better than two?
I do.
I, I'm really kind of leaning that direction too, just in case. You're paying for a chance you got to take no matter what. Yeah, so there it is.
I'm making a motion to go with travelers option number one.
Second.
Alright, you got a motion, uh, Bruce? Second from Leon? Go with uh, travelers option number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Appreciate y'all coming down, Ben and Todd. Appreciate it always. Alrighty, uh, here's one that got a little dust on it. Number eighteen from Mr. C. Discuss and approve recommendations for RFP number twenty-three oh seven autopsy transports and pauper cremations. We're getting more and more people for some reason dying in Liberty County. And, but we're getting more people. It's pretty simple, but uh, for some reason, they want to come to Liberty County to pass away, and we get to take care of them, so.
Yeah.
There it is.
Okay, so we went out for proposals, uh, really trying to get an idea of, of what each one of them would propose, to see what they would charge, because right now we have a whole charging different amount. Uh, it's going with one, talking to all the funeral homes that responded. They like the uh, the uh, system we're doing now, you know, they don't want to be, one of them doesn't want to be in charge totally. You know, in case they have to cover all the costs, so they like the way it is now, so. So we're trying to do this in a way where we can include them all, and not just go with the, the lowest. Uh, we had a committee, myself, Mr. God, Mr. Arthur, and uh, we looked at what everybody did, and then there was Ace Ansel Dayton in Cleveland, Neil, and then Sterling and Allison down this uh, south end of the county. We looked at what they proposed, and we kind of uh, want to be fair to the county, and we want to be fair to the funeral homes, so we kind of went toward the middle of what they, what they proposed. And uh, right now, you know, commissioners want to go this route, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what the, the amounts we came up with. And then we worked on uh, getting each other to sign a contract, thinking with Mr. Poston to sign a contract. We're all paying each one of them the same amount, but we came up with on the they're picking them up, a couple JP calls, picks them up, takes them to Beaumont for an autopsy, and uh, seven hundred ninety-five dollars. And for cremations, we have uh, if they're, decide they're pauper, and the county decides uh, we need to pay for the cremation, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And then we included on here that if, if they have someone, it's the medical, medical examiners in Beaumont, and they end up having to bring them back, and if, if Liberty County then determines they're pauper, which will probably be after they bring them back, and we would pay them three hundred and fifty, but that's a rare occurrence. This happened, I think, before, but it's very rare, so.
It's happening more often now.
Yeah.
So what happens, they'll be sitting at the medical examiner's office in the cold storage, and there may be two weeks, and they finally call and say, what are you going to do with them? And we had to make a determination. That's when we get Matthew involved, and
Yeah.
But uh, so three fifty to get the late, the late ones, the late, late ones, yeah.
They had to go pick them up, because, because right now, we, is a, we have an autopsy, our responsibility ends when they're sent there. Then after that, it's the families to bring them back to wherever they want to, we don't have to pay for that. Uh, also, we kind of threw this around and, and included in there that, and I'm not sure if anybody's talked to Penny yet, about going through heritage and healthcare to decide who's a pauper. Just somebody to sign off on it. Because they're, you know, they do that now. They check their resources, so they'll be able to do that pretty easily, but I'm not sure if anybody's asked for it yet, or but I guess that's commissary court, y'all can assign that through. So if y'all like those, those fees, y'all think those are fair, then you can start uh.
Can we address the storage?
No, we have to gorge out of it. I think right now, they're, they'll do a few days' storage, and uh, but we didn't, we didn't.
This is flat fee only for, for each of those services. It's flat fee only.
Yes.
Instead of a, a situation where they're able to itemize out, you know, individual expenses and charges uh, to increase it, this is uh, only we will pay for uh, you know, transport to from a cremation itself.
Yes, sir. Buy bag, everything's included in that one fee.
I think it's spared to the few halls are spared in tax, where there's some, some like, you know, the prices.
They are good, yeah.
And then I'll be able to, but I'll be able to get some contracts, and like Harold said, we need to get a sit on that on our side and verify the financials.
And, and not to mention, I care what another county's doing there. It's a different example. Uh, Sterling has a contract for the west side of Chambers County. It's nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for it.
Yeah.
We need to address the issue of being any involved in this and, and the good healthcare. I mean, we, if we approve this today, we still need that avenue to certify whether they're paupers or not.
Well, what I put in the proposal was that so our commissary court designated, so we can do that later, you know, and get the contracts filed on. Make a motion to approve.
And, and so the court is aware, uh, we have been reviewing policy for other counties as well uh, and begun crafting a, a policy that we will recommend to commissioners for very soon.
You know, Matthew, one thing for clarification as, as well. When you have the in, in digit side of this, and the cremation's performed, and then you have a box sitting there with the remains, invariably, what's going to happen is people that didn't claim the deceased to begin with, and then all of a sudden, they The deceased to begin with, and then all of a sudden they want to claim the deceased after they're. They're, they're in the box. I can't say. Yeah. I mean, you know, do we have anything in a policy on that? How we handle that?
I'll be looking at that.
Yeah. So you want to be fair, you know, but the other side of it, I understand, you know, dying's expensive. I mean, it is.
That's fair. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. We got a motion from Bruce saying it's great to approve. The, uh, recommendations for RFP number twenty-three oh seven. All the others say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen, uh, Mr. Arthur. Consider approve the purchase of a John Deere sixteen, uh, sixty-one oh five E boom mower at a cost of eighty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars, ninety-five cents. Roden Bridge Precinct two, and Greg, if I'm not mistaken, we got the boom mower, but we forgot the tractor.
Yeah, they didn't get the tractor on that. It was about one, one sixty-eight, uh, oh, six, six point seven five.
Like a boat to a bridge.
One sixty-eight, what?
Once, uh, one six eight, zero, six, six point seven five.
Okay. So it okay with, uh, that motion, Matthew? To, uh, include the tractor?
Ah.
Yeah.
Let me, let me look at the language here. To include, uh, so, yeah, I mean, a boom mower alone does not cost eighty-one thousand. I, I'm taking it.
No, not.
But we did not include that in the language. I think to be safer, we, we should probably approve only the boom mower at this point. And approve the, the tractor at a later date.
Okay.
Well, I mean, she said, she said the thing out, we put both of them. You didn't add it on the.
Uh, I, yeah, I understand, but the, the, uh.
Matthew?
Uh, yes, sir.
You can't use a boom mower if you don't have a truck.
I understand. And it's, as much as we, we would like to imply a lot of common sense in the, uh, uh, in the notice provisions and open meetings act. It still requires some specificity so people will know. And it looks like they're paying eighty-one thousand for a boom mower alone.
The packets were included with the notice and, um, if it's included in the packet, then there would be sufficient notice.
I, I, I think, uh, for safety sake, we, we should approve only the boom mower and, uh.
Let's just save the whole thing and we'll, we'll probably have a special meeting in between now and next time anyway.
No doubt about that.
Sorry to be that way, but I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got a motion. Most of the table.
Same deal with everything.
I'm going to question, but I'll return my second.
I'll return my first.
Making up in the table.
There. Most of them, Bruce, saving Greg's table. All the papers say aye.
Aha.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Whew, glad we got that cleared up. No, we, they kind of jump, somebody walk around with a boom mower.
Yeah.
Good point, Leon.
Boom mower is eighty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah. Number twenty from, uh, Mr. Poston, consider approve appointment commissioner. Pursuant to Texas local government code, section sixty-three, Jersey two, is represented by Michigan's court for sale of abandoned highway property. Uh, to adjoining landowner. Philip Sterling said, real property being located in their highway one forty-six south of Dayton, Texas, being comprised of approximately one point seven two acres. And being a part of and out of the G C and S F, section number forty, abstract Liberty County, Texas. Matthew?
Well, um, typically, if the county owns real property, we have to go through, uh, an auction method of selling it. Uh, but as it turns out, if the property was purchased as a part of a highway project. Uh, and is no longer needed for that purpose, then, uh, we are actually, uh, supposed to, uh, dispose of it. Uh, in, in a, a list of priorities under two sixty-three dot oh two. The first of those priorities is in a budding or adjoining landowner. This, uh, property is completely surrounded by, uh, uh, Philip Sterling, his family's property. The method, uh, of disposition requires several steps. Uh, first, uh, the appointment of a commissioner. Uh, uh, now, that commissioner has no authority to sell the property without commissioner's court's order. But, uh, never let you appoint a commissioner, you appoint an appraiser. Uh, which will be our next step. We'll have to go out, uh, and, uh, get an appraiser. The appraiser will tell commissioners for what the minimum. Fair mar, uh, market value is. Below which the commissioner's court cannot sell it. It would be my recommendation. The commissioner's court consider ultimately selling this property for, uh, the fair market value plus any and all costs. That the county has incurred, uh, in assessing the fair market value and, and assessing the property for, for this transaction. Um, so at this point, uh, I can tell you this is in, uh, Commissioner Karbowski's. Proceed, just barely. It's on the east side of, of one forty-six. Uh, and what, uh, Mr. Sterling said is, uh, uh, open, uh, comments earlier, exactly correct. That we didn't even know we had this. It's, does not have a separate tax account, uh, through, uh, the C A D. Uh, the deed that transferred it to the county is from nineteen thirty-five, which is, uh, sure, there are a bunch of other, uh, folks there who could. Give us a better history lesson on this, but that, that seems to be whenever there was a major renovation to one forty-six and a widening, uh, of one forty-six. Uh, but the, uh, property is, uh, 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 that joins the right away of, uh, one forty-six and leads to a material pit right there.
So we need to appoint a commissioner at this time.
That's it. And what any commissioner does not bind the county to any price, does not bind the county to even selling the property. It's just the first step we're going to have to take.
Who, 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 who appoints the commissioner? The commissioner's court?
Commissioner's court as a whole.
Okay. So we'll come back and vote on that later.
I, I'm asking, do you go and appoint a commissioner now? Uh, and then, uh, that person will kind of, I, I foresee do a lot of the legwork too and, uh, in helping, uh, usher this thing through, uh, uh, the appointment of a, 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 a real property, uh, assessor. Uh, or appraiser and, you know, just usher you through kind of being its sponsor.
Is this a paid position?
No, it is not. I would ask that it be a member of commissioner's court. It has to be. I'm looking at the val, uh, the, the language again right now.
So it has to be a member of the commissioner's court that's appointed a commissioner.
That's correct.
Okay.
And Matthew, my understanding is, because I have read, read this law and, uh, basically, the commissioner appointed is charged with, uh, finding a, uh, an appraiser, having the land appraised. Examine it, making sure everything was done correctly, and then submitting it back to our commissioner's court's approval.
That's a good summation. That's correct.
Yeah. Well, you got four commissioners to choose from, so it's up to.
Then your commissioner precinct. Like having bamboozled.
You need, y'all need a frying pan with that. Most from Greg, second David to appoint, uh.
Maybe in the top most.
Commissioner Karbowski is our representative, uh, commissioner.
Uh, I'm ready. Yeah, I'll take care of it.
All the papers say aye.
Aha.
Likewise, that motion carries. Boy, you're going to have some of this. Okay. Number twenty-one from Mr. Poston, consider economic development application given by Dayton, Texas Development LLC. Requesting economic development incentives for a residential development known as Trinity Crossing. To be located near category six oh one and six oh two. And precinct said incentives to include participation in the tax increment reinvestment zone. Created by the city of Dayton and approval of a resolution to proceed by the commissioner's court of Liberty County. Texas pertaining to the contemplated participation. In a tax increment and reinvestment zone designated by the city of Dayton, Texas. Authorizing county staff proceeding with participation. In preparation of a plan for the tax increment and reinvestment zone and authorizing other matters related to the foregoing. I would ask that we move this into executive session at this time and let's have our considerations with our attorney.
Take a motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce, saying we're moving to executive session. All the papers say aye.
Aha.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. It's now. Yeah.
Can you give me about two or three minutes?
Now eleven, twenty, we're back in regular session from executive session. Uh, during a discussion or motion considered, considered for the item.
I think most that we take no action at this time. But authorize our counsel, uh, to end the negotiation with the city of Dayton, Project Developer, our Trinity Crossing. For. Clarification, negotiation, uh, aspects, all aspects. Uh. This agreement.
Can I, I, I called it up to authorize the county attorney to negotiate with city of Dayton and Trinity Crossing, but then I missed the last, the last part to do what?
Uh. To enter into, uh, discussion and, uh, evaluate.
Okay.
We're good.
And I'm sure commissioner's court will want, uh, frequent updates, so, uh, stay tuned. I'll be back to you, uh, with information as soon as I get it.
Okay. All right, you got a motion. You say, you have a second. I'm sorry, I might be right this minute. You have a motion from Greg, second Bruce. All the papers say aye.
Aha.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries.
Thank you, most of your adjournments, Doug.
Yeah, most from Bruce adjourned, second David. Hallelujah. All the papers say aye.
Aha.